All right, good morning. Let's call to order the work session of Wednesday twenty one, twenty twenty three of the. All right, first item on the agenda is the approval of the work session minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty three and May seventeen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, move in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposing nay. Parris. Doug, Mr. Jones, morning.
Good morning. I should update on some projects, the streetlight upgrade program. The additional fixtures that we're missing and some training with the software. Uh, all the park base.
The other ones are in, they're functioning.
Yes.
It's all good.
Yeah, I mean, we managed to minor issues and still checkings and verifying that we got everything. I think there may have been some gaps between what was on the Pico billing, what was actually field installed. So we're working through those issues, but we're ninety five percent complete and. Uh, for park basins, all the structures are in, all their work is pretty much completed. Um, so we're, we're nearing the completion of that project, so it's progressing with that. Uh, Cape Hill resurfacing had some scheduling issues and delays. Uh, so now we're looking to start next Tuesday for the first step. Weather permitting. Uh, contractor does place door hangers for at every residence to alert the residents that their work will be happening the following day, so. They do get, you know, some advanced notice in addition to everything that we do, uh, you know, at our level. Uh, base repair, uh, contract work will begin next week on that. That's a three day, three to four day process, so. Our traffic signal electric locating network was done a couple of weeks ago, so everything went off, uh, went really well. Went to actually be more efficient than we had hoped. So, uh, that was good. I'm just waiting for all the documentation at this point. Uh, we spent a lot of time to be sure that everything was done safely and. Uh, with no issues there, so we were out there in force with all the traffic also, it's good. Uh, our facilities feasibility study, we're pressing on that. Uh, Roberts Road Bridge, we became aware that the county sent letters to. Area property owners, uh, don't find them that the work was going to be done. Bridge is going to be removed and they would again installing pole set can. Uh, you know. Side of the bridge. Um, we've got a copy of the letters, we forward all that to you. Uh, they did hire a consultant, they're doing survey work, so that every fat work was, uh, some survey work was done last week. The biggest concern that I'm hearing from even one of the residents is that, you know, the pole sack can affect on the property, so. Uh, nothing's been designed yet, everything is just preliminary. I assured them that we would have some input. What happens for that since it's our road?
So the county would be responsible for any right away that they would. Need to put the goal to second.
Right.
How much of an opinion does this township have towards that? I know, know we discussed this in the past that. They said this is no, we can't do that. If they say let's have a cul-de-sac, you know, we have a time, do we have a period to discuss that or is it really out of our hands?
Well, I think we've kind of nudged them in that direction for cul-de-sac just from a, uh. On emergency services standpoint and fire trucks turn around and that kind of trash trucks and whatever. Um, so I, I would think we'd have, uh. Fairly decent amount of site input on how the project unfolds from here. Thank you. Just some department activities, uh, played it all rep work with K C L projects. Um, if you recall, we had an issue with some stumps on the Dean Creek Road at Price. Uh, we rented a stump grinder, obtained an agreement with the property owner. Uh, so we weren't removing any of the tree roots, we were just grinding things down below the surface and restoring. The property and they are satisfied with the work that we've done, so. Uh, so we spent a lot of time last week, I've just gone around with. Grinding up, grinding down all the stumps of me, of trees that we've taken down over the last few years, just to make our. Uh, areas where we, we typically mow, so just to make our lives easier, but that's spent a lot of time on that last week. Uh, first round of the roadside mowing and the, and the metal mowing is completed. Um, also dealing with the property owner at the intersection of Mars and Upper Bayland, you mentioned there was an accident there yesterday. Uh, there's concerns there that the. Uh, there are too many accidents and then we should be looking at a four way stop at that intersection, so. Working through that process, gather the information, going through the, uh. Looking at all the different warrants and making sure that if it does warrant a four way, that we perceive that if it doesn't, that we don't, that it doesn't, so. Yeah. Talking with Stephanie, getting her input on that as well.
Isn't that the intersection where one of our vehicles was involved in an accident?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Uh, that's all that I had. You have the answering bucket, you know, throw all your stuff. Round up, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Doug.
Um, I'm just back, uh, this morning to follow up on the previous discussion we had for the twenty twenty three cats of. Uh, potential grant, um, I think at the last meeting, um. You had requested that we look at the plan for the Walmart and see if there was anything that was offered for jokes on their deferring sidewalk. Um, Holly pulled those plans, there's nothing on, on those plans, or if it's any sidewalk. The furrows or anything. Um, I know we also talked, though, and I will talk about maybe some other scenarios, um. I will say the old traffic count data, um, I still have to look at like a little bit further, um, it was only, there was a. Minimal amount of pedestrians that she captured at the intersection, uh, but it doesn't necessarily capture that something parallel. Go back to the videos. But at this point. You know, our reputation must go, but, but that on hold. And look at the other scenarios and see what we can possibly do. And also Joe and I talked about, talked about Andy, how some other potential. Um, investigation as to how, how sidewalk might be implemented along that.
Thank you, it makes sense to me.
Right, and then the next one is the walkable letter rec update, did hold the public open house last Thursday evening here. Uh, we had eighty to ninety, uh, community members and residents, um, show up, they came in door a little early and stayed until about eight thirty, eight forty. Uh, before the last one left, so, uh, the room was full, we had boards all set up around the room, different stations, uh, that started with the open house, people just having. Answering questions one on one, one on three, uh, then Natasha did a, a presentation and then we went right back to the open house, so it was. I think people felt comfortable bringing up their concerns, their questions, um. I, I would say that in summary, there's a variety of opinions out there. Uh, relatives of the project, ranging from why should we make it walkable and why should we look at one thirteen relocation to. Put one thirteen relocation in and yes, make it walkable, so we kind of have a gamut of. Feedback, it'll be interesting as we are able to start to compile. All of that information and see where that takes us to the next, uh, the next steps, but we'll. Be planning on in the July Trail and Sidewalk Committee meeting, having everything, you know, having some additional information and summarize that and bring that to that group. And then moving forward, we'll have another public meeting, open house to the same, you know, similar setup in the probably mid to later fall. Before we compile the study together, but I will say, uh, several stakeholders, stakeholders were in attendance. Uh, I'm still waiting for their feedback, just reviewing minutes and whatnot from the state board meeting episode. Prior to the open house, so I think, again, we got a lot of good feedback, uh, middle. I guess the information is on the website through June thirtieth or an open survey, so people can still go in and provide their comments, look at all the materials that were presented. Uh, and it was survey option to get us, uh, additional, and so we've had to, that, I mean.
Obviously, the word got out, which was good.
Yeah.
You're happy with the attendance, at least from that standpoint?
You know, again, the room was full, it was standing room.
Right.
And I felt like people took the time and really perused the board, they just go, they, they definitely stayed, asked a lot of questions. So, we didn't really know what to expect as far as the crowd, kind of came in with. You know, not sure how many people were going to show up or if we were going to have, you know, too many people for this room, but I think it, it was a, I think we were very happy.
Appreciate what you, what you needed, all of the staff that showed up to make it possible, I've received, you know, heard a lot of good feedback and, um, I know several of you were there as well, it was very interactive, so there's a lot of. Written feedback as well as stickers and.
Right.
It was great to see, thank you.
And I, I want to thank again members of the Trail and Sidewalk Committee, there were several here that were helping us out, um. You know, Amy and John worked the welcome table, get people signing in, kind of having a conversation with them while. You know, Mike and, and the rest of us were stationed around the room in different boards, so, um, I think it would, it was, uh. I was pleased with the way it turned out, and I think we got also some feedback to, um, tweak even our. M T F application that we're working on for the one thirteen relocation, that's due to fill off, so. We've made some modifications based on that concept layout, just kind of defining that the, the connection points are not set in stone the way the concept plan looks. Years ago at this point, um, and that will be work into our application moving forward, um, for this, for this particular submission.
Any questions further for Stephanie? Thanks, Steph.
Alright.
Chief Medley.
Yes, sir. Uh, just a brief update on bus control, uh, since inception, which is. About two months now, we've had ninety three violations submitted to us, only approved about half of them. There's, uh, what I would consider a number of very close balls, uh, that I didn't think qualified, so. We still have two officers approving those and. There's consensus as to what constitutes egregious, uh, to include another school bus. Passing a school.
I constitute the egregious, I think.
That was, well, that was pretty bad.
Agree for that.
Very efficient. Same bus company, sorry, same bus company? Wait. In the light bar on, stop sign was out, it was probably fifteen to twenty seconds later. Yeah, like when they. Driver didn't wait, did they? Something went through because they're waiting for someone to get on, I mean, I've seen that happen. Oh, you can't tell, you can't tell from that, yeah, I hope that would be the case, Dave. Sometimes they wait for. Just looking for the fun, sorry. Yeah. Really plausible way for that to be, yeah. But they weren't keeping that another way.
I found it, and bus will actually stop here in the bus. This is on egregious.
They know the cameras are on.
Both buses, right? Both buses have, yeah.
Good lord.
All right, very good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, all the, uh, and all the new, uh, authors are working out well, if you're related. Some plans on any more hires in the near future, very good.
Good to hear, good to hear, I was just not going to say that. Still down one.
No idea.
Very good, no worries. Uh, Mr. Pookie, building and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so. So far this month, we had fifty five permits issued, there are no zoning green board apps. For the month of June, for actually for, for next month as well. The planning commission, what we're going to be looking at is one ninety six Main Street, conditional use. Payman, there's a, uh, condition is application that came in for, um, Brian Unberger's property to redevelop it, uh, with apartments and AutoZone bank. So additional uses required for the apartments and retail store AutoZone. And, uh, the bank, uh, needs additional approvals, um, before they can come before the Board of Supervisors were approved. So, we're going to be looking at that in three fifty five Maple Avenue, um. The, uh, the building permit came in and they're filling in the courtyard and. Um, information was already provided on the plans that you guys had already seen and proved. Um, but as a formality, because they're showing the, the filling in of the courtyard with the building. Um, we had them go back through the event and finally develop process, so they're going to be in front of the planning commission, um, this month and in front. Front of board in July for that kind of land development. Okay, but nothing will change except for, uh, you'll see that the courtyard is being filled in. They want to, they want to build it in, they'll have for real estate, you know, and it's a better use. We will also be looking at, uh, sign ordinance amendments. Now that's hot off the bread and one, I wanted to, uh, put it in front of you this morning, so, uh, I didn't do it in advance, I apologize. But you have it there, we don't have to talk about it much today, um, but I wanted to go out, went through a couple of different iterations with the. Agreement and think that we, we come up with something that, that might work, so we're throwing it on the wall, it's. But, um, this is a temporary sign ordinance amendment, uh, there are lots of. Some antiquated sections of sign ordinance that does not address temporary signage or it addresses the content of the temporary sign in which. Constitutionally is very risky to enforce, and so trying to clean that up, or I could say the better part of a year and a half, for two years now. Uh, it's a gas, and then we, and then we table it for a while, so that I, I like gets away from it, so. I was, I was going to ask Mike, I know about a year, year and a half till, I did bring this to us, and I read the county's model, or just, well, here is, is any major changes from the last year and a half or. Anything that was sent out, so.
I haven't looked at it yet this morning.
So, there, there has been somewhat of an evolution, so the, the first iteration did not really encompass of. Enough of the temporary sign important stuff we wanted to cover, because we had more issues than what was brought up at the time. Um, so then we faced, um, the draft on the bottle, or that county, and it was just too many signs. For the township, there were, there were, there are lots of allocations for signage in the draft bottle. County, and then so we, that aside, and then we kind of went back. The minimum amendments necessary based on our burn code, but that was not content neutral, no. So then we went back to the model, but then really pared down the model. So there are opponents and, and verbiage from the bottle that, that if you're familiar with bottle boards, and. You'll find here too, like for the duration by personal expression signs, those are, are in here, it's just that there aren't. Large and small integration signs, and there are large and small temporaries, and we really tried to pare it down and. It's a simple file.
Appreciate you.
So then for the, the line meeting. You will have one hundred Chrisper Lane, Weber Land Development every quarter, and then, uh, like I was mentioning, one ninety six to eighty three. All good, well, the planning commission would be offered, they should advertise that for hearing in. And then it could be like Maple Avenue, uh, uh, men and file.
Like, um, the fifty five permits issued this past month, is that similar to last month, or last year at this time, the same period, have, have you seen any? Reduction permits coming through, what's the, uh?
So the, the trend over the last couple of years has been upwards, over just over one hundred whole permits issued by buildings of apartment. So this would be, I believe, a scosh under, um, depending upon how it can come on.
Right.
Uh, but over the past two or three years, the June and July have been the busiest months for the. The permanent apartment, but.
Very good, any questions for Michael? All right, moving right along, Mr. Jacask.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first I might have is the, uh, clock. That's this month or ago, the Recreation Authority, uh, wanted to recognize. Just give it service to the township and to let our golf course. And so they suggest that in lieu of the bench, which I think we were initially discussing for installation of the course, they would like to install a clock and I put some of that information in here. But they looked through this Lumicron information and they're recommending the standard E Howard model. Which if you're looking at the state paper here, it's the first one I started. And with delivery costs, it would be approximately ninety three, ninety, or exactly ninety seven hundred and thirty dollars. I also included some language for the plaque that would be attached to the block. I think I discussed, we talked about the, the township and the authority, letting the cost of the block. Uh, so it'd be just scosh under, uh, five thousand dollars each, uh, connect the board was okay with, with, with that. Who stuck my head?
So we need to install that?
Yeah, okay. Well, they can install it, we can install it, I think probably. Through the, um, plaque associated with this? Yes, and I got sites, the language here is the Lamb of Thelma's plaque, so we're going to recognize service to township as well as the hall. Would you?
Sure. And White Dogger was.
And where are the golf courses? I think they were talking about, uh, the Penang Breeze. Them splitting it makes a big difference, and we were talking before, and obviously the years of service. Nice to have something, remember, so we talked about a bench, which really came to about three, four thousand dollars anyway, so.
Bring this into the right.
Bring it right to that rate, right, that's, that's my thought.
And my only question one, and maybe it doesn't make a difference, but obviously from many of the years that he was on the Board of Supervisors, he was also the chairman. Right. Do we want to recognize that, we said. Took up a lot of his time.
Sure.
Uh, during that time.
We're personally going to add me, I'll figure out when he was here.
Yeah, I mean. Not to think it was for a good fortune for the time he was, uh, on the board, so I think that might be nice, right, as well.
I will ha, I will be happy not to get more emails on this.
It's just.
Has been relentless in his pursuit.
Yeah, well, that's nice.
It is. Keeps me on.
What's it doing? Item is.
Can't put win-win on the flag.
We tried, I wasn't, it was one of those right there. It wanted to done as well.
He would often say things in. Let's not, let's.
Let's not revisit all. That, my email, the. Um, the next item is, Ms. Shelley. Give some information, texting.
Thank you, uh, thank you all, as I discussed last time, um, the Communication Committee had researched various texting options, as you know, we did our third vacuum, also the results and some of the results, people were asking, we had texting capabilities. So the committee went ahead and looked into two different texting services that we had researched, one was called Notify Me, and the other one was called Text My Gov. Um, both of them were offered a lot to townships, a lot of capabilities, in front of you, I have information regarding text my gov, we also, uh, so we contacted various, uh, townships. Read the same questions, talked to, uh, members of their staff, that was kind of see what they appreciated, what they didn't like, what they did like, the thing with notify me is. Based on a, based on a whole nother platform of a website called Civic Plus, we realized that that, one thing that we got a lot of surveys, people really liked our website. Therefore, we didn't see the need to really revamp the whole website, also, we found minutes from various townships that could see the pricing for that, and honestly, we didn't think that that was necessary, but we will send you the results that we found with that as well. What's in front of you is an option called Text My Gov. Um, I highlighted some of the main features, also attached are some of the questionnaires where we ask these questions to various townships at the committee members' vote. Uh, key resident services provided is to provide or offer text messaging capabilities to those who opt to use that means. Key product features are texting alerts and resources. Vendor support levels, what we saw, the consensus was excellent, um, a couple of people commented that when they haven't needed any support. And the company reached out to them and said, hey, is everything okay? You haven't needed any support, we want to make sure we're here. Some key interactive features, our smart texting technology identifies keywords and text messages to provide immediate assistance. And what that means is, uh, we did a couple of examples, let's say we have, we implement a source such as this, I can literally text, hello, you know, I need a permit for a deck, and immediately it has, um. It recognizes keywords, and it'll say, hello, are you looking for a deck permit, this and that, it gives links right to the website, right to the forum, so that people have that right way. Uh, pricing, it was variable from what we've seen, um, we saw as low as down to three thousand for the initial setup, but we found generally four to six thousand initially, and then about three thousand dollars on going, and it can be contracted. The estimated impact on township staff, asking the various townships, very minimal. Um, we assessed that there's no more than two hours a week, the staff we spoke to, uh, they like to schedule alerts at the beginning of the week, most of them said that the time was kind of a learning curve, just getting used to it, but they. Put in anything they want at the beginning of the week, it's centered out. The value, we feel that the pricing is fair, based on the consensus of various townships, we feel is a good value. Again, what this service does is allows a word about, similar to constant con, people can also opt for other options as well, um, and it also provides, as we said, the interactive feedback. For this texting service itself, the way it works is, somebody would come in, give a presentation at no cost to the board, uh, explain it in more details, answer the questions. We wanted to present this to you with our feedback, and we want to suggest that the township consider looking in something like this, or at least that it'd be worthwhile to have a presentation.
Did, um, appreciate all the work you guys done on that, and I'm, you know, I get a number of text alerts out of hell, I got on some of the plans down in other places, so I. You know, I know when they have no parking restrictions, et cetera, for no reason, but, um. The county uses, I think it's Ready Gov, is that the, the alert, have you, did you look at, and it looks like there's a couple of municipalities, I don't know if we can, can we tag on to the county system?
The county uses, uh, I'm going to show you actually an example, what we saw, it seems to be similar to Civic Plus.
Okay.
And that kind of looks like this, correct? One of the samples of different townships, you click on what you would want a text notification for.
Yeah, something along that line.
We found that, that, that is, that looked very nice, as we said, that was, and that was interesting to us, um, I found a resolution from another township. They paid nineteen thousand five hundred for the first year, four thousand eight hundred seventy five each additional year, and again, it would completely revamp our website. We felt that that might be something down the line that we want to experiment, again, texting is newer, it's something that we saw, uh, on our survey, a lot of. Like, it's something we can explore, again, they're welcome to come and talk to us too.
But it was, you know, I didn't know if, what my question, I guess, were, is less the company that provides it for the county and more. Piggybacking on the county system.
Yes, we actually do have, we encourage people to hop on that.
Right.
This would be almost something completely different, it would, uh, give us just our constant contact alerts, they can opt in to receive all that as well, but that would be optional, but that would be based off, off of what we already have, the emergency contact. Um, and again, this is more than the interactive, hey, you know, I need to, you know, where can I find this? Is there an ordinance for this? That information will pop up right away as well, it's actually fascinating, try to, at a couple of our meetings. And again, we have our meeting tonight, just wanted to know if there's any other feedback or questions that you would like me to present to the board, or, you know, is this something that we'd want to look into and have? Questions that you would like me to present to the board, or you know, is this something that we'd want to look into and have a presentation and learn more about it?
The implementation of how it connects to our existing information. Is, I just wonder how that happened.
It it was interesting and um, if you, in fact, our last meeting, you can, it's on YouTube, we're, we're going over how we want to word this, because we were saying AI. You know, then we realized it's not really AI, so this is based off of. What they provided, they come in, set it up and they hook it up to your whole system from what the township. Again, we talked to uh, different managers, you know, staff, uh, and they all said, oh no, they came in, gave a presentation. Set it all up right on each website that uses it, they uh, they have a whole page that tells residents, hey. Try this, you know, check this out, text this, you see, so it is all laid out. How it works though, Ken, I'm not that tech savvy, but uh, I do know that they come in and set it up for us. Nope, does not fall back on the townships.
And is the purpose? My understanding for many of these, it's alert information going out. We're paving a certain street, doing, you know, there's a snow emergency in effect, there is whatever. What I'm hearing, which I haven't seen it before, just is fascinating that you can text. I need information on a permit and then it, so that there isn't a live person responding to that, it is all, it's basically directing them to other resources that we already have.
Absolutely, it finds keywords, it identifies them and I'm I'm guessing based on, you know, other uses in townships as well. Might recognize, as I said, that example, and it could be anything, it could be I want a porch. You know, is there a noise or is there, you know, some of the most common questions we went here. And the idea is that it takes off that extra work time that the staff might use. You know, it it solves that issue.
Is it, did anybody do an analysis once they implemented it? How many people actually used it?
Yes, um, it was, it was interesting. Uh, some of the things, one of the comments specifically says, um, I'm not sure. What it is on here, that I really liked it and I wish more people would use it. So that is something that we kind of talked about. How many people will you, will utilize it on our survey? Our survey went out to various uh. Various networks, you know, maybe somebody who received texting didn't get that. Our hope is that somebody might say, hey. You know, you can, you could text the township or, you know, check out the texting and we might grab someone who might not otherwise have visited our website. Now I might go to that as well.
If my question would be, if I need a deck permit. I need to find the number to text to find out about it, right?
Yes.
Which means they're probably going to the website.
Likely.
Yeah, which means the deck permit information is on the website.
That is true, but then uh, and and so yes, somebody could do all that research, but the reality is, and this is one thing that we've saw in the survey. I think you guys could all test to it, people say, well, you don't have that information there. Where can I find this? A lot of it to. Stash credit is on the website, but I think this just makes it a quicker means to do it. Um, another thing, you know, that somebody commented just in conversation. You know, they're on the, they said that they, they know that some people will use it because usually when the office is closed, you know, somebody's running around, maybe they have kids, maybe they're doing something else to. Care parents. Oh, now I can sit down and worry about this. Uh, it's closed, I don't know what to do, you know, so it might just be a quick resource to text. Um, on the every website, township website that uses this, there is a little button you can kind of see, it says click here, learn about text my go, and it gives the number. A link right to all the information. I I feel it's, I feel something that, again. Our resident portal is kind of newer, not a lot of people have it, different townships, so we're kind of learning, people are saying, oh, this is nice. We're kind of jumping on the ball now too, whereas in the future, a lot of people want this, the prices could be different, I think. I think it was worthwhile to look into. I think the rest of the committee felt that way, again, notify.
I think it's worth looking at and I, I would be more, I mean, I'm. I see a greater value in it on the information going out than using it as a. Portal backend, if you will, for, I think it's an alert system would be. I'd be curious from a staff standpoint and all how beneficial that would be. I think it would be, I mean, if if enough people sign up for. To get those results, because it would be great for the parking restrictions and the other things, another means to get that out on top of the evens. And I think that's, I mean, that's where I see it used primarily, and that just may be the way I had it set up to receiving notifications.
And anyway, I think that's where the conversation really went on our last meeting too. We kind of started out, as you see with the other one, you click here, you want a notification on this, this, this. Love that idea and didn't realize, at least based upon the person that I spoke with, when we got together, there was other members who said. Oh, actually, they use it specifically for just texting out, you know, so that's why we based the value, we said that. The value is good, the pricing is fair, we felt that they weren't using it to their fullest case. So you can, it it is, it does offer a variety of different things, but you're right, let's say we have the fair, we want to make sure parking is here. Sudden road closure, website down, this is another means for people to have access.
How long have we had the email system up and running in place, the constant back? Two years and how, and how many email addresses do we have? Out of fifteen thousand residents?
Correct. And of those six hundred, uh, we average between sixty-five and seventy-five percent of the emails get sent are open. That's another story, but yes.
Some of us are in there multiple times. I don't know, it's four thousand a year to service four hundred numbers, I'm not sure that's. Something we should take a look at, but I'd want to make sure that if we're gonna spend the money, that there's. Some kind of significant issue for it. Because we've got every means known domain except for texting now that it gets to these people, it's. You know, it becomes overly redundant. You're, you're basically giving the same information to the same people.
And and I think the hope is just, and young, you know, younger generations, I know even for me, my younger siblings, I'll call them like, why are you calling? Like, why would you call everybody alive, everybody good? Yeah, no, text me, you know, so I think. That kind of basis that we're looking at, and at the same time, that generation, they're buying those. Coming here, so yes, it is almost redundant, but we have the signup, we have the email, we know not everybody uses certain things and I think that was the basis.
I think it's worth. Looking at. If we have, I think the the big thing, yeah, defining. The goals for this is, you know. A, it's primarily an alert system, B, it's secondary use would be to fund it, whatever, sort of define that down a little bit, and I think that would help us quantify the. I think, but I think the thing except to at least pursue a little bit further.
And it'd be both the township offices as well as the police department if I hear you.
Have the access to.
And they send out alerts, I think, on Facebook. See, I'm not on Facebook, so.
Yeah, and we do leverage the ready monk code. Well, that's what I was gonna say, so can you get an alert out to the, any lower, like? If you have a message to go out, can you go through emergency services and say, send this to whoever's on Ready Monk Co's text system? Okay.
And and one thing we did discuss, we didn't want. And I'm sure you guys might agree with this, would probably agree, we don't want the township to be, you know, always our township's responsibility, let's say they want to subscribe to Ready Monk Co. Important things, they shouldn't rely on the township, you know, necessarily, we would encourage them to subscribe to that, and any alert we have, we give. In addition to that.
Well, and that's my only concern is, are we duplicating efforts? If I'm already set up for Ready Monk Co. and I get it from ourselves, or? Do I need the duplicate text?
And this is more for.
That's the alerts on it.
This is more for things on the constant contact. So you know, it might even just be, hey, here's the latest constant contact where, you know, this road is closed up here, here's country fair days information, stuff like that, that we use. Constant contact for, that wouldn't be necessarily qualified as. The county.
Well, I would encourage.
Actually, Ready Monk Co., I, they have notifications like. Red. Richborough, Red Hill is having their. Fair or something, they have those type of things and they have things like, oh. Crash pickup is gonna be. The day. Street sweeping is gonna happen this week and. As well, you know, they do have all those things, like parking restrictions are in effect for, you know, the country.
Who's the contact for that at the county?
Very in tune with it.
I guess that would be my only point, maybe as an alternative. To starting this is, if there's more. Uh, capabilities with the Ready Monk Co. side, explore if there's an option for us on that. Because as far as that, that's free to, it's correct, yes, because it's, it's not free to the residents, because he paid for my county day. But it's uh, you know, it's not an additional.
Or if we try it, say, for a year and.
We have a lot of people using it or it's not working.
Or it's not working the way we want, then we pursue another option.
And and we did discuss those ideas, we looked into what capabilities our website currently has, and again, we felt that this is just worth. Here and now, for that reason, the also the interactiveness back and forth, and again. The Ready Monk Co. we do have that capability, but this is more for, you know, I don't know, for any month I would send out a word for smaller things.
But I, what's what we think they might.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I even, because I know that. For what I would call the Parks and Rec side of the world and things along that line, they, I know that they do send alerts out for some of those activities. Yeah, but I think that's where that dropdown menu is, that some people only sign up for like the. World ending things and not about the, you know, other things, so. So I think for the committee, continue to pursue this, come up with some programmatic goals, but I think a parallel track is figuring out. What is already available to us that we may not be fully utilizing through the county system, so that we don't end up spending money to duplicate. Eighty-five percent of what's already available to us. That make sense?
And I, and you know, in our interim, I could give you some offers like how that, because I think we put it in every goal with them. Please, please.
Right.
And I can sort of give you some lower self or.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. We've done nice job on that.
You guys want more information on the notify copies, Christian breakdown, the town as well.
Any else, sir? That's it. Executive session today.
That was our next man.
I said one thing about the, with the sort of authority, we had the uh, engineer. Take a look at our five thirty-seven plan and where we are with EDUs and all that sort of thing. And within five years, we are. With everything inside uh, five thirty-seven, we are basically on the edge. Uh, with the EDU so, and building out, so any additional things or zoning changes for higher density kind of thing. We'd have to do upgrades to sort of plants.
Does that include the capacity available for the telemedicine system or?
That exclude, that includes, so you would have to use that. So um, yeah, we're gonna send a formal letter over to the township, like. Kind of, so everybody kind of knows where we are, and also. From memory, that would also mean. Do we? Or run out, whatever, do we add capacity sooner in the? Western end of the township at the Harleyville plant, or is it fairly well balanced between the two?
Uh, I think it runs out sooner in the Harleyville plant.
Right.
For years, we've been very.
Diverting, diverting uh, flow in either direction, making it work better, but yeah, we're, we're right on the edge with.
Has there been, and I guess the question, Mike, would be, it would be interesting if we get that letter. An analysis of what the potential build out is.
Very hard on that. They actually have EDUs per property throughout the entire five thirty-seven plan. They have it specifically. Um, if everything gets built out and they they know down to the unit and down to the EDU. Do a great job, it's really uh, very comprehensive, yeah, it's great, pretty interesting.
Anything else from anyone? Motion to a juror. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye it is.
Dave, did she look at to any of the existing problems that may have allegations that are not fully using those elements?
Uh, yeah, and well.